This is St. Louis Public Radio. Support comes from Peric Corporation with a commitment to serving the St. Louis community through local partnerships and charitable support guided by Peric's core values. More at peric.com/culture.
From St. Louis Public Radio. This is the Politically Speaking Hour on St. Louis on the Air. I'm Jason Rosenbaum. Later in the hour, we'll talk with St. Charles County Executive Steve Ellman about a regional initiative to train police officers. We'll also discuss how St. Louis's leaders are approaching the rise of massive data centers and the roadblocks and opportunities for broader regional cooperation. But first, it's now been a week since legislators passed a measure to make it much harder to approve some constitutional amendments that will ultimately need voter approval in 2026. Missouri lawmakers also approved a new congressional map aimed at ousting Democratic Congressman Emmanuel Cleaver. Now that I've had some time and distance from covering the special session in Jefferson City, I've come to two separate conclusions. First is that Governor Mike Kehoe's special session often felt like it was on autopilot. Absolutely no one was surprised when the GOP supermajority passed the redistricting plan, converting Cleaver's Kansas City-based district into a GOP-leaning seat. And there was no suspense whatsoever that Republicans would back a plan requiring constitutional amendments put on the ballot through the initiative petition process to pass statewide and in all of the state's eight congressional districts. For Republican State Senator Nick Schrower of St. Charles County, the special session spoke volumes about GOP cohesion, especially when infighting played such a major role recently in derailing legislative priorities.
It feels good that the Republican Party is finally coming together. The personal attacks seem to be no more. We've got all branches of government kind of working together, the federal branches and the state branches, on moving a map to the governor's desk that represents more of Missouri values.
Here's my other conclusion. Yes, the special session was predictable, but it was also noteworthy because the General Assembly broke a slew of norms and precedents. There are a lot of examples. Let's start with the redistricting plan itself. The map that splits Kansas City into three congressional districts passed the House and Senate without a single alteration, literally. Nothing changed from the time it was introduced to the point when it was sent to Kehoe's desk. By contrast, Republicans quarreled mightily in 2011 and 2022 to get a redistricting proposal past the finish line. It's clear why this happened. President Donald Trump is pressuring GOP states like Missouri to redraw their congressional lines before the 2026 election cycle. And while some lawmakers sought to downplay Trump's influence, Republicans like State Representative Justin Sparks of St. Louis County bluntly stated he was voting for the map to prevent the Democrats from taking over the U.S. House.
My constituents have said it loud and clear that they fear for their children's future because of insane policies of the left, and that is the real reason we're here.
And while GOP infighting and dissension did not slow the map's trajectory, there were some notable opponents of the redistricting plan. Republican House Speaker John Patterson and now former Senate Appropriations Committee Chairman Lincoln Huff voted against it. Patterson's dissent is especially notable, since House speakers have the ability to kill things they don't like. The Lee Summit Republican, though, did nothing to stop the new map from going to the Senate, nor did he get in the way of perhaps the most restrictive plan ever introduced against Missouri's initiative petition process.
I didn't think my constituents would be in favor of that or the majority of them, and I just tried to represent them to the best of my ability. And it's why I voted the way I did, but I'm happy that other people got to vote the way their constituents want, and ultimately, both were successful.
The universal disapproval of Missouri's Black Caucus to the redistricting proposal also shattered recent precedent. In 2011 and 2022, some African-American lawmakers voted for maps, primarily because they protected Cleaver and the St. Louis and St. Louis County-based first congressional district. But not this year. African-American Democrats from Kansas City raised alarm about the legislature attacking Cleaver, who was the first black mayor in that city's history. And State Representative Lakeisha Bosley of St. Louis condemned the addition of largely-white suburbs to the first district.
Let's call these maps what they are. They are racist. Period. Full stop. And every one of you are going to probably sit there and pat yourselves on the back, oh, she's crazy. Oh, she's fear mongering. Oh, this is race baiting. No, you are the ones causing the race baiting. You're the ones getting people amped up and ready to go.
Significantly diluting the African-American population of the first district is illegal since it's covered under the Voting Rights Act. And while Republicans say the new district still has at least a plurality African-American population, detractors say there's no way to know for sure since the map uses outdated census data. And then, there was the Missouri Senate.
Let's get order in the chamber, please.
We don't have any rules. How can we hit?
Let's please get order in the chamber.
There is no rule.
What, four? You're allowed four.
There are no rules.
Senate Republicans have used a filibuster-stopping maneuver known as the previous question
more frequently, including in May to target voter-approved abortion rights and paid sick leave requirements. But last week was the first time they deployed the previous question just to pass rules, and that made it more difficult for Democrats to slow down the special session's proceedings. When the time came to debate the proposal to curb some initiative petition plans, Republicans didn't provide a chance for anyone to speak. They called the previous question, approved of sending the plan to voters in 2026, and gavelled out of session. Senate Minority Leader Doug Beck of St. Louis County did not hold back from expressing contempt for what his Republican counterparts did.
They're cheating to cheat because their ideas suck. Their policies are terrible for everybody, and they want to hold on to power. Everybody knows that. I'm not like this. I am not like this, but I see the death of the Senate in Missouri, and it's frustrating to watch this happen.
What's striking about all of this is that Missouri Republicans altered all these norms and changed all of these well-established procedures to pass two pieces of legislation that may never get enacted. The plan to make it much harder for some constitutional amendments to pass requires a successful statewide vote, and Sam Licklider of the Missouri Association of Realtors told lawmakers last week that his organization is mobilizing against it.
We're currently planning our actions for the election. We have somewhere in the neighborhood of 8,317,000, so we're well-positioned to ensure our arguments reach the public. We've used the initiative petition twice. We believe it is crucial to retain it in case we feel there are additional changes needed in the future.
Missouri AFL-CIO President Jake Hummel said last week that members of organized labor groups are absolutely incensed about the initiative petition plan.
My phone's been ringing off the hook. My emails are constant. They are angry. And quite frankly, I look forward to calling Mr. Licklider on Friday and having a discussion about beating this at the ballot.
The Realtors and labor unions say they have good reason to be opposed to curbing the initiative petition process. Since the proposal still allows constitutional amendments the legislature puts before voters to pass with just a majority vote, both groups fear that the Republican supermajority legislature could try to enact ballot initiatives that are harmful to the real estate industry or members of organized labor. Meanwhile, the new redistricting plan is facing several lawsuits, which will likely take a while to work their way up to the Missouri Supreme Court. And because the new lines did not receive enough support in the House or the Senate to go into effect right away, redistricting opponents are gathering signatures to put the map up for a statewide vote. The prospect of a redistricting referendum provided a jolt of enthusiasm for Missourians who flocked to the Capitol last week to protest the special session.
The people united will never be defeated. The people united will never be defeated.
That included Frida Tucker, a Jefferson City resident who really, really doesn't like the new map.
I don't know what the answer is. I don't even like politics, okay? I just know we need transparency. We need to stop the power grab. We need, like, at least, you know, we don't need to do it every three years, okay? Like, something's not right here.
This is what democracy looks like.
Sullivan resident Glenn Cagney, a longtime union official, said the map would have a chance of getting rejected at the ballot box, even though voters have elected GOP candidates in statewide positions.
Missouri will vote to be fair. They want fairness over the political way the Republicans are doing it.
But even if the redistricting plan and the initiative petition curbs falter, the fallout in the Missouri General Assembly could last a lot longer than people think. Some Democrats in the Senate are already planning on making the 2026 legislative session miserable for their GOP colleagues. And for Representative Cleaver, the man who Republicans are spending so much time and energy trying to oust, he says Missourians will feel the harm caused by the past month's session linger for the foreseeable future.
In the last few years, chaos has been on a hunt, hunting all over this country. And chaos has found us. It has finally found us. We're going to fight each other in the greatest nation that God allowed to exist, when we don't have to do this.
We need to take a quick break. When we return, we'll dig into the efforts to defeat the new congressional map in court and at the ballot boxes with Denise Lieberman of the Missouri Voter Protection Coalition. This is the Politically Speaking Hour on St. Louis on the Air. Welcome back to the Politically Speaking Hour on St. Louis on the Air. I'm Jason Rosenbaum. Missouri's new congressional map is facing challenges on two different fronts. The first is an effort to gather more than 100,000 signatures to put the revised lines up for a statewide vote. The other involves legal challenges in Jackson and Cole Counties. And while redistricting detractors are focusing on how lawmakers drew the state's eight congressional districts, the question that could ultimately upend the map is if legislators have the authority to engage in mid-decade redistricting. And if the Missouri Supreme Court says no, then Missouri's 2025 redistricting gambit will have been all for naught. Joining us now to break down the fight against the redistricting proposal is Denise Lieberman. The St. Louis City resident is Director-in-General Counsel at the Missouri Voter Protection Coalition. She testified against the redistricting plan as well as the proposal to curb the initiative petition process earlier this month in Jefferson City. Denise, welcome to the Politically Speaking Hour on St. Louis on the Air.
Thank you for having me.
I want to start off with a clip from House Budget Committee Chairman Dirk Deaton, who handled the redistricting plan in the House. In his remarks last Tuesday, the McDonald County Republican correctly predicted the redistricting opponents were going to file lawsuits over the new map.
And then further, before we even produce a map, promise that they'll see us in court. And so, civilly or criminally, we're going to get you. We won't let the people of Missouri vote. We're going to do it in the courts. And I think that's a sad indictment of where we are. This is a better map, and democracy is in action here today because the people's representatives who have been duly elected are going to get to vote.
That was House Budget Committee Chairman Dirk Deaton, a McDonald County Republican who sponsored the redistricting measure in the House. Denise, why is this redistricting plan worth challenging in court?
Well, Jason, Missouri's constitution makes abundantly clear that redistricting is tied to the census, and that's why we do it every 10 years. The idea of redistricting is to take account of population shifts so that we can adjust district lines as needed to ensure that every district, congressional district, has approximately the same population as the others, and to ensure that communities are kept intact. Our constitution makes clear that only when that new census data is certified to the governor, then the legislators shall draw those new congressional maps.
The constitutional provision that you just referenced doesn't specifically mention a prohibition on redistricting several years after a census, say in 2025. Why do you think courts will ultimately interpret the absence of that language as a prohibition and not an authorization for mid-decade redistricting?
Well, Jason, courts look first to the plain meaning of the words. And here, there's a very direct correlation that when the census data is provided, that then the map shall be drawn. And so, there's a very clear connection that the maps can be drawn only when that census data comes in. But there's other reasons as well. The argument that's being raised by members of the legislature simply doesn't make sense. It would open the door to allowing the legislature to redistrict every single year and us never knowing when, what the maps are going to be. But the key point here is that it's tied to population shifts because the duty of lawmakers to redistrict is about ensuring one person, one vote, ensuring that congressional districts are about the same in population. It's about ensuring that communities come together and without new data. And we know, for example, that there's been a surge in population in Kansas City, in some St. Louis County suburbs. The map simply wouldn't be reflective of the current population trends.
So you mentioned Republican arguments for this map. You are correct. They are arguing that this is a legal thing to do. And one of the people who feels that the constitution does authorize mid-decade redistricting is State Representative Bill Hardwick. He's a Pulaski County Republican, and he made that argument while talking with me earlier this month.
Exclusio unis is an actual concept. But exclusio unis means that if you omit the mention of one thing, it means that you're not authorized to do that thing. Exclusio unis typically applies when there's a series. Like, if I say the legislature has the power to legislate about desks and couch and chairs and doors, then that would imply the legislature doesn't have the authority to legislate about windows, right? It's a series, and something can admit it from a series. The way that Article 25 reads, or the way that the section 25 reads, it's not a series that admits. It says thereafter the census, so after the census. So if I want to say the letter of the law technically, are we reapportioning after the census? Yes. Does it make sense that there are no times which the legislature can come back and amend that statute after they pass it? No.
That was State Representative Bill Hardwick, a Republican from Pulaski County. Denise, you actually, I think, heard that argument in a committee hearing. What's your response to the representative?
Well, that's not the correct way to look at the constitutional language. There's also a provision of legislative construction that says, hey, if the legislature has granted explicit authority in one part of the constitution and neglects to do so in the other part of the constitution, those have to be read in harmony. And our lawmakers, our constitution does allow for mid-decade redistricting for state level, so state representatives, state senate seats.
Which, by the way, Deaton tried to make an argument that that in and of itself is an authorization for congressional redistricting.
It's not. It's under the section of the constitution that explicitly covers just state-level redistricting. And, you know, there's a lot of ways that state redistricting is different than federal. In our state-level redistricting, for example, we have a redistricting commission. Those maps have to be drawn in public. There have to be public hearings. That's not true with congressional redistricting. Legislators can draw those maps. Here, those maps were drawn in complete, you know, in back rooms. It was not done in public. And the constitution says something different. It does not include that language that is explicitly included, allowing state lines to be revisited from time to time. And the broader point here responding to the senator's remarks is that lawmakers already complied with the constitutional mandate. When the census data, the 2020 census data, was certified to the governor in 2021, lawmakers did, in fact, go about the process of congressional redistricting, in fact, rejecting the very kind of seven-to-one map that they passed last week in the legislature. And they went and passed a six-to-two map.
And by the way, I don't think I explained this in the intro, but a seven-to-one map refers to a plan that would make Emmanuel Cleaver's fifth district in Kansas City Republican-leaning. The six-two map keeps it Democratic-leaning, but continue.
Right, right. And let's remember that that existing map, the six-two map, was already heavily gerrymandered. Democrats make up about 40% of Missouri's population and yet only had 25% of its representation. And now, with the intent to strip the district in Kansas City and split it up, you're looking at less than 20% of that population.
Before I move on to the next legal argument against the map, what would be your response to people like Hardwick and other Republicans who say if the constitutional provision in question doesn't allow for mid-decade redistricting, then it creates a situation where lawmakers wouldn't be able to revise a map that's struck down in court, say in 2024 or 2025?
Well, that's simply untrue. Obviously, a court order that finds that when the legislature did its constitutional obligation, like they did in 2022, to pass the maps after redistricting, if those maps still have to comply with the law, right? And our constitution requires that those maps be as compact as possible, that they keep communities intact, that they honor the provision of one person, one vote. And so, if they don't do that, a court can say, this map is illegal, you have to redraw it. But that's the only circumstance. It's not a situation where lawmakers, just on a whim, can get a redo. And that's what they're asking for here. They have complied with the constitutional obligation to draw those maps after the 2020 census, and they did so in 2022. And they don't get a redo just because they have a political whim to do so in 2025. They'll have a full opportunity to revisit these maps when the 2030 census data comes out and draw maps that reflect the changing population of Missouri.
Do you think that another argument that could be used is the provision in the constitutional amendment we're talking about that says that districts have to be as equal population as may be? Since we're talking about census data used for this map that is at least four years old, there is really no way to ever figure out if that standard is breached.
Right. And that's one reason that we do redistricting every 10 years after the census, in order to ensure that the maps reflect the most accurate data. No new data was provided that would trigger that legislative obligation here, and that's one reason that these maps should be struck down.
I spoke with Travis Crum, who is a law professor at Washington University. He told me he did not find the argument that the map violates the equal population requirements in the Missouri constitution to be a particularly compelling reason to strike it down in court.
The best data that we have when it comes to population distribution is the census. We do do other things, like the ACS survey in between the decennial censuses, but they are not as accurate and they are not as granular as the census data. Secondly, the one-person-one-vote rule is kind of a legal fiction in that we draw the maps at the beginning of the decade, and then they're in place for the entire decade. And obviously, people move over the course of a decade, and cities grow in population and shrink in population, but you don't see successful one-person-one-vote challenges filed in years ending in eight or nine, even though those maps are obviously outdated at that point. And then finally, redistricting litigation takes a long time. The congressional redistricting case out of Alabama just had a huge ruling earlier this summer, and they're going to take that up to the Supreme Court. So that might not get finalized until sometime next year. And just because we don't have more recent census data doesn't mean that the state is now in a position where it just can't redistrict in response to a violation of the Voting Rights Act.
That was Washington University School of Law Professor Travis Crum talking about the contention that the new Missouri congressional map violates state equal population requirements. What is your response to that clip?
Well, I mean, he's right in that we don't have any new data. So these maps have to look at the 2020 census data and determine whether those meet the legal and constitutional requirements. But one thing we can see is that this map is clearly not compact. It's clearly not contiguous. And in that sense, it violates provisions of the Missouri constitution that sets forth that you have to keep these district lines as compact as possible. When you split a single community of Kansas City, which is clearly an intact community, into three pieces and include some members of Kansas City in the same congressional district as farmers on the Illinois and Iowa border.
Which, by the way, was the case, I hate to be pedantic here, but that was the case with the old map because all of Platte County was in the sixth district. So I want to make that clear, but continue.
Right. But now, what you're doing is really splitting up the actual community of Kansas City, Missouri, right? And including it, splitting it in thirds and including it with rural populations and dorms at University of Missouri all across the state, and really splitting up the neighborhoods that make Kansas City the city we all know and love, and create the culture and the areas of interest that many of us appreciate about Kansas City.
I want to shift to the referendum. A group called People Not Politicians is in the process of collecting 100,000 signatures to put the map up for a vote in November 2026. Can you just talk a little bit about how this process works?
Yeah. And I know there's a lot of confusion about it. Well, the Missouri constitution says that when lawmakers pass a law, and these maps are a piece of legislation, Missourians can, by gathering sufficient signatures within 90 days, petition to recall that law. And that is the petition that was filed on Friday as the Missouri legislature passed these maps. And the trigger for passing this type of referendum is the passage of the law by the Missouri legislature. So signature gathering has begun. There was a bit of a back and forth with the Secretary of State's office.
And I'll chime in here. Republican Secretary of State Denny Hoskins initially rejected it because Kehoe hadn't signed the bill into law, but he reversed course over the weekend. It's now being examined by the Missouri Attorney General's Office and State Auditor's Office. I wouldn't be shocked if Hoskins eventually did reject it based off this idea that it has to be signed into law. I talked with Chuck Hatfield. He disagrees with that interpretation. He's one of, he's like, sorry, I'm a little tongue-tied this afternoon. But he and you are both involved in a Cole County case over this.
That's right.
But can you talk about Hoskins' potential interpretation that this bill has to be signed before referendum starts?
It's simply inconsistent with the plain meaning of Missouri's law. It states that when the legislature passes legislation, that triggers the ability of Missouri citizens to try to recall it. And that's exactly what's happening here. And there are even court decisions that have affirmed that interpretation. And otherwise, right, the governor, who maybe disagrees with the citizen action, could hijack the process because he's got 45 days in which to sign or veto legislation.
And there is speculation that Kehoe hasn't signed the map because he is hoping that the court's rule that, you know, the referendum can't start until the governor signs the law, and then you frittered away 45 days. But as you mentioned, like, this group, People Not Politicians, is gathering signatures right now.
That's right.
So they're banking on the opposite happening, basically, correct?
Right. Yeah. I mean, this campaign is going to kick off over the weekend, and signature gathering is going to kick off in full force. It's a short period of time, 90 days, to get the well over 100,000 signatures that are going to be necessary to place this measure on the ballot. And once that happens, those maps are on hold. They're not allowed to be enforced until the people have the opportunity to vote on whether to recall them.
Now, my understanding is the governor cannot move this election date, but the General Assembly can because the General Assembly moved the referendum from right to work from November 2018 to August 2018. Now, but this is where it gets really interesting and tricky. The only way for this map to ever go into effect before the 2026 election cycle is to, like, move it to March or April, which is, I can't remember the last time there was a statewide election there. And I also think, this is my last question for you, do you think moving the election outside of August or November could actually make it more likely for Missourians to reject the map because the people who may be coming out are the most informed voters? And there are a lot of well-informed voters who are really upset about this new map. And there are a lot of well-informed voters who are really upset about this new map?
Yeah. And what we know data-wise is that Missourians are overwhelmingly opposed to these maps. Americans are overwhelmingly opposed to mid-cycle redistricting done solely for political purposes. And so we know that there is a very strong amount of opposition to, to rigging these systems, you know? I mean, Missouri's the show-me state and Missourians believe that they should be the ones electing their representatives, not the other way around. Representatives here are just very plainly and openly said they were going to manipulate the district lines for their own political gain and no other reason and weren't afraid to break up a community, a thriving community, in order to do it. Now, the governor could place the measure on, so the, the measure will go on the November 26 ballot. The governor could place it on another statewide election like the August election, but to do it in March or April would require them to call a special election, which is quite expensive. So it's possible, but I think it would rile the ire of Missouri voters even further to know that they were going to have to shell out millions of their tax dollars to place this on a special election.
Denise Lieberman is the Director and General Counsel for the Missouri Voter Protection Coalition. For all of our coverage of the redistricting and initiative petition saga, be sure to go to stlpr.org. Denise, thanks for joining us today.
Thanks for having me.
When we return, we'll talk with St. Charles County Executive Steve Elman about how the region's leaders should approach law enforcement. This is the Politically Speaking Hour on St. Louis on the Air. Welcome back to the Politically Speaking Hour on St. Louis on the Air. I'm Jason Rosenbaum. If you've lived in the St. Louis region long enough, you've almost certainly heard complaints about a lack of cooperation between local governments. And with so many cities, counties, police departments, fire protection districts, and school districts, working together on shared initiatives seems like a pipe dream rather than a normal course of action. But that changed earlier this summer when the leaders of St. Louis County, St. Charles County, Jefferson County, and Franklin County signed on to a new law enforcement training facility. With $50 million coming from the state of Missouri, backers of the idea such as St. Louis County Councilman Mark Harder say it will make St. Louisans safer.
This is about keeping our officers safe as well as keeping the population safe. And if you can teach de-escalation and you can handle situations in a, in a somewhat of a academic environment and help those police officers understand how to do these things, all the more power that this new academy will have.
Still, the initiative is not getting universally warm reviews. For instance, Maplewood resident Lauren Villa said during a late July St. Louis County council meeting that the facility was a misplaced priority.
What I want to know from everyone that supports this bill is if you would look a child that's food insecure in the eyes and say, our community needs militarized police more than you need food.
Joining us now to discuss the new law enforcement training facility and other major regional coordination efforts is St. Charles County Executive Steve Elman. Elman was first elected to his post in 2006 and has served as a judge, a Missouri state senator, and a Missouri state representative. County Executive Elman, welcome to the Politically Speaking Hour on St. Louis on the Air.
Jason, thanks for having me.
What is this new law enforcement training facility? And how did the leaders of these four St. Louis area counties get together to sign on to it?
Well, I think it started back in 2019, and it was kind of an effort by the Police Foundation, which basically works with St. Louis City and County. And they were gonna, they were gonna build something. And anyway, the thing moved forward and then they started talking about curriculum. And remember, there was some differences of opinion back then about the, the police. And anyway, the thing died. Bob Brinkman was one of the people that was working on it then. He actually asked me during that period, do we want to get in on it? I said, we don't have money to put into it right now. Thank you. But after it failed with the city and county, he came and said, why don't we go to Jefferson City, see if we can get state money and get all the counties involved? And I said, let me talk to Jefferson, Franklin. And we did, and we got involved. Sam Page was interested. And we went to Jeff City and got the, the state taxpayers to pay for this. And I think it's going to benefit not only the people in the region, but people at least on the eastern part of the state.
Do you know what type of training will actually take place in this facility? I've heard descriptions that it might have like a model urban town that police officers can do training in. I've heard there's a gym where officers can, I would assume, play basketball or something, but also, you know, you know, exercising is part of police work. Like, what is going to be happening here?
There'll be a gym for exercising, but that, that's, that's very far down the list of priorities here. And what kind of training? You got a new idea? This is a facility to train people. We have not agreed on any one-size-fits-all training. Now, the St. Louis County Academy is going to be going in here, and that's, that's part of the agreement. And right now, in St. Charles County, we agree with the training that they give their people and will be using it. And I think most of the municipalities and maybe everybody will be using it at first. But if for some reason, somebody comes up with a better idea and think they can train better, they'll use the same facility, just at a different time.
Yeah. You mentioned kind of the, I guess, the 2019 thought processes about policing in St. Louis. And I guess we could go back even before 2014 in Ferguson, that there were a lot of smaller municipality police departments, particularly in St. Louis County, that had really bad reputations for basically being predatory agencies that were trying to get tickets and money out of people. Do you think that this facility could be an opportunity for especially smaller municipalities to train there and to have better police officers?
Absolutely. I mean, I think St. Louis County, St. Charles County, and even the city of, of St. Louis has a relatively high standard of training right now, which we can make even better. But you're absolutely right. We've got, what, 45 municipal police departments in St. Louis County, which is, we've got, we've got one of those small police departments in, in St. Charles County. Our other smaller cities contract with the county to provide police protection. But yeah, it's those, it's those, those small police departments whose, whose members need the training more than anyone else.
Were there any efforts to get the city of St. Louis on board with this? You mentioned that they were, in the initial discussions of this, but they were not at the East West Gateway signing. Like, what exactly happened with the city of St. Louis here?
Well, as you know, there's other issues around the city of St. Louis Police Department right now.
That's right. They are not actually controlled, but still, they were controlled by the mayor's office when this was being formulated. So was, was that one of the reasons, the prospect of so-called state control?
I think Deshaun Jones was, was not interested in, in what we were, were doing. We, the other four counties from the beginning have realized that for this thing to really work, eventually we need to get the city in here as well. Not only because their facilities need a real upgrade, but because, you know, our police departments right now, I've said this many times, as a politician for the last 35 years, what I've learned, if nothing else, is that our law enforcement people cooperate a lot better with each other than the politicians do. And that's why as soon as we get this thing built, even before we get it built, we're going to turn it over to the people on this board that are going to be law enforcement people that are already working together. And of course, when you're working together as a region, you need to have the city of St. Louis in that operation. So yeah, the more, the quicker we can get St. Louis in, the better. And that's something I know the governor, saw the governor last weekend, and that's one of the things he said about, about this training center. He said, we need to get the city in.
Now, you mentioned the $50 million from the state. Is it going to cost more than $50 million? And if so, the board that you just mentioned, are they going to have any ability to raise tax revenue to fill in the gap?
Absolutely not. They are a political subdivision, so they're not dependent upon St. Louis County or St. Charles County or anyone else. They're a political subdivision. They will have the opportunity to try to get state and federal grants. They will support the operations with fees that are paid by the departments whose officers use it. And, you know, hopefully, we won't have to go back and, and ask for more money, but you know, with the, with the situation on construction and everything, we're hoping it goes down and the cost doesn't go up.
So one of the interesting things about this project is it needed buy-in from the county councils or the county commissions in the four counties. Everybody voted for it except one person, and that happens to be my St. Louis County Councilwoman, Lisa Clancy of Maplewood. Here's Clancy expressing her opposition at a county council meeting from earlier this year.
I am concerned about the new federal administration and the removal of checks and balances on justice and law enforcement in this country and this community. I'm having a hard time supporting this for that reason. I think that this might be a little too much.
That was St. Louis County Councilwoman Lisa Clancy explaining why she opposed a new regional law enforcement training facility. And as I kind of played in the introduction, that, that contention was kind of echoed by a lot of other St. Louis County residents who are, are leery about this. So what's your response?
My response is that for two years, we were working on this together, Republicans and Democrats, with a Democratic administration in Washington, DC. And nobody from Jefferson or Franklin or St. Charles County said, hey, you know, I don't think we want to work with Sam Page or anybody in the city because, because of who's in the president's office. So I just, I don't, I see that's a total non sequitur.
Yeah. Although, I guess, to be fair, this is coming, we are interviewing you like around the time President Trump has talked about sending in National Guards troops to St. Louis, which it seems that Governor Kehoe has kind of basically politely declined that for now. But can you understand that like the president's like public statements on this may give rise to the idea that this could, this training facility could somehow be federalized and used for some federal purpose, which is clearly not the case, but sometimes perception is reality to some people?
I think that's a bit paranoid to think that way. Yeah. I mean, I'm not going to predict what will or won't be done in Washington, DC right now, but you know, there are, there's our constitutions and laws and, and rules and so forth. I can't, can't imagine how, how that could happen other than the fact that we go to war.
I want to shift a little bit to something that's been on the minds of a lot of St. Charles County residents, data centers. Now, it should be noted that St. Charles County already houses a number of data centers, including a fairly large one at the Mastercard campus. But you were probably watching the uproar over a proposed data center in St. Charles City. And I guess that this has prompted you to spur on a conversation at East West Gateway on the topic. Tell me a little bit about that, because this is a topic that's getting a lot of attention right now.
Well, my comments at East West Gateway were basically that, you know, we've got a situation now where this thing came up, the people who wanted to build it were not forthcoming with exactly, with all the facts, which is the first problem. You just can't do that nowadays. You can't sneak something through without telling people everything they need to know about it. But more importantly, what I was trying to find out about it, and I started calling people, everybody I talked to thought it was either the greatest thing in the world or the worst thing. And I think, as in most cases, the truth is somewhere in the middle. And I think East West Gateway, I'd love to see our staff put together, maybe have some hearings, do some research for us, put together, hey, here's the, here's the pros and the cons, and here's what you need to think about. There's a lot of different people who have been thinking about this already. The Missouri Senate, the legislature passed a Senate bill that basically makes it clear that these data centers, when they come in, if they use up a whole lot of electricity or water or whatever it is.
Which they do. They, they use a ton, basically.
They use a ton of it. And that's why the legislature required that if they build it, if they build the facility, they also have to build the infrastructure necessary to provide that water and, and electricity.
Did that make it to the governor's desk or did it just pass out of the Senate?
No, I think it, I think it became law.
Okay. So it dovetails with kind of a dueling philosophies where you have people like tech oligarchs and by extension, the federal administration, who are basically like, this type of technology is really important and regulation shouldn't stifle it. But then you have, I guess, a lot of people in St. Charles and also Republicans like Josh Hawley, who are like, there needs to be guardrails, not only on artificial intelligence, but on the data centers that use a lot of energy and have real environmental concerns. You mentioned that there's someplace in the middle here between, I guess, those two, I don't want to say extreme philosophies, but polar opposite. Do you have any ideas of where that middle ground could be?
Well, middle ground philosophically and literally, the right kind of ground is what we need to start with. The one, the facility in St. Charles, which, you know, I'll disclose the fact it's half, half a mile from my house, and my wife was totally against it, as were all of my neighbors.
Oh, okay.
I was trying to keep an open mind. Of course, I never really was involved in any decision about it. But that was in the floodplain. It was, you know, it was, like I said, a half a mile from my house and a whole lot of other people lived closer. And nobody could really give us any data about, you know, what impact that would have. So, you know, when in doubt, people were against it. So, you know, I said at the time, when somebody asked me, it sounded like a, a good idea, maybe just in the wrong place. Now, I wasn't around when we first got electricity and telephones, but I'll bet you, there's a lot of people that complain when they put the telephone poles in, down the street in front of their house, okay? And I remember, I remember 35, 40 years ago, when, when, when people were complaining because they wanted, they didn't want cell towers in their neighborhood. They wanted to use their cellphone, but they wanted the cellphone tower to be somewhere else. So this is the same type of situation here. It's something that if, if it has to be done, we need to make sure there's a process where it gets, ends up in the right place.
Now, do you think that this is going to have to be like broader state legislation that sets this up? Or do you think like the various leaders of St. Louis, St. Louis County, St. Charles County, et cetera, could come up with like their own uniform regulations?
Well, like I said, the state's already become involved and they, according to what I read, the PSC is making rules right now.
They are.
So, you know, the state is already involved. Obviously, I'm for local control and you have to go through the zoning process. And people need to be heard if, if this is going to impact their neighborhoods. But, you know, it's, it's a sort of situation, again, when we have a discussion, I hope the next discussion is a little bit more balanced here and people will listen to each other a little better than they did before.
St. Charles County Executive Steve Elman has served in his role since 2007. He's also a former judge and Missouri state legislator. And are you going to be retiring next year? Are you rethinking that?
I'm rethinking that.
Okay. Well, I know you've said that to others, but I just wanted to get on the record.
I've never been, haven't been this confident in the, the possibilities for the, moving the region forward like, like we have right now.
Well, thank you. And if you rethink it, we will have you back on the show. Thank you so much for joining us.
Glad to be here.
The Politically Speaking Hour on St. Louis on the Air is produced by Jason Rosenbaum, Alex Hoyer, Emily Woodbury, Danny Wasantowski, Maya Norfleet, and Elaine Chah. Audio engineering and sound design by Erin Dorr. The politics editor is Fred Erlich.
St. Louis on the Air is a production of St. Louis Public Radio. Understanding starts here.
Do you find yourself regularly listening to episodes of St. Louis on the Air? Suggest us to a friend you think might enjoy our conversations. And leave us a review and rating on Apple Podcasts on the App Store. It's the simplest way to help people discover our show. Thanks.
St. Louis Public Radio is a member-supported service of the University of Missouri, St. Louis.
The Gateway brings you the day's news each weekday from around the St. Louis region and the state capitals. In Jefferson City—
Our schools are accredited. We don't need this bill.
And Springfield—
How many more years must pass before lawmakers see time is of the essence?
I'm Abby LaRico. Join me each weekday for The Gateway on the STLPR app or wherever you get podcasts.